Okay, welcome. I'd like to call this March 12th, 2018 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, our first standers, one nation under God, in the name of this law, with the regime of justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, wait, wait, one second.
Thank you, sir.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Colosar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Parnell Kaby.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of February 26, 2018 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the finance committee met prior to the council meeting and will again meet in two weeks, health, safety, and sanitation committee, Mr. Colosar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have a meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Public properties committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Ms. President. Public properties met last Monday, March 2nd. We have one item on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Special legislation committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting held and nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets and sidewalks is planning on having a meeting March 26th prior to our finance meeting at that time. Time will be depending on when the finance meeting starts. We'll start a half an hour prior to the finance. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and utilities committee, Mrs. Parnell Kaby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week to discuss the Avon Lake water increase of 3% that will go into effect. I believe we'll be discussing that shortly.
Thank you. Emerging technologies committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Reports, I mean, requests for council action, we have several for finance. 1852, trade-in of police department firearms. 1853, purchase of a 2018 all-wheel-drive interceptor for the municipal court. 1854, fiscal year 2016, chip private rehabilitation, 749 North Huntington Street. 1855, fiscal year 2016, chip private rehab for 527 Bronson Street. 1856, expenditure for equipment for new pumper for the fire department. 1857, authorized conversion of ED and marketing associate position to full-time. 1858, MRC amend sales and benefits code pay grade changes for two positions. 1859, city hall parking structure, public bidding procedure, and consultant selection. 1860, 2017 carry-forward ordinance. 201861, budget amendments. And 1862, fund advance from number 001 to 386. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an update on the building collapse at 226 South Court Street. Since our last council meeting, the utilities have been restored to all customers except the damaged structure. Starting on last Monday, March 5th, a new gas line was, is being installed along the roadway in front of the businesses. There's an existing gas line behind the businesses now that are supplying them with gas. That has to be tied in at Smith and Court Street. Yeah, Smith and Court Street, and then go behind the alley between Huntington and the damaged building, and then access some of the businesses along Washington and South Court Street there. We worked with the utility company to maintain two lanes of traffic throughout the work zone to keep it safe for them, but we did have to remove the parking, street parking. But there is free available long-term parking in every direction from the work zone. I'd also like to report that the project seems to be moving much quicker than was originally anticipated. They told us three to four weeks to start. They got quite a bit done last week, and we're hopeful that it could be completed, at least the work in the road, as early as by the end of this week. I've had a number of businesses and constituents ask how something like this could happen with the city building department and inspection of commercial buildings. And the fact of the matter is the city does not go out and routinely inspect commercial buildings any more than we would come out and inspect your home, for example. When a business pulls a permit for remodeling, for expansion, things like that, then the building department is involved, and we go out and would inspect that. But the city does not have the expertise, nor for that matter, the staffing, to inspect the conditions of all the buildings in the city for risk purposes. There are, however, architects and contractors who would be willing to provide this service if any of the building owners are interested in having an assessment of their building done. And then yesterday, March 11th, I attended Fellowship Baptist Church and presented a proclamation to Pastor John Peterson. He has been pastoring at that church for 35 years, and they recognized that yesterday at the church. I wanted to announce to the public that the year-end report for 2017 is posted on the city website on homepage, so it's readily available. And just mentioned, I'm very proud of the work of the city staff and the economic vitality of our community. And last but not least, the bicentennial events for March are focusing mainly on the contributions of women in Medina's history. And if you check their website, which is www.madina200.com, they regularly update the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, director of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things to report. First of all, in the finance department, we're very happy to be back to full staff. My accounts payable, my previous accounts payable person left a while ago, and we have a new employee who's starting her second week today, started her second week today. Secondly, for all Medina residents are required to file city income tax, and if you would like help with the filing, people from Rita will be here in town at our rec center. The dates and times for that are this Wednesday, March 14th, from noon to 5:00, and on Saturday, April 7th, from 9:00 to 4:00. Again, those are both at the rec center. They'll be able to help you with the forms for filing your local income tax. They ask that you bring with you, so that they can help you with that, social security numbers for yourself and your spouse if you're a joint filer, W-2s and 1099s from all employers, and anything that's relevant, and then your federal schedules and addresses where you resided during 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, city law director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, police chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to encourage everyone to take a look at the citywide year-end report, as well as the police department's year-end report. We're very proud of our activities from 2017 and look forward to some new programs in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, economic development director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, planning and community development director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, recreation center director.
Just one quick update, sir. Thank you. The next rec advisory board meeting is this Thursday at 7:30 in the morning at the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, parks and recreation director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick updates. We have two construction projects that kicked off this week. We're in the process of rebuilding a pavilion at Reagan Park at the visitors' parking lot. That should be complete in a week and be available for rent. We're also in the midst of starting a dugout reconstruction project at Fred Greenwood Park, so there's going to be a lot of activity going on over there, but it's our hope to have it finished up before softball season kicks off in April. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to announce that today, we, as expected, were officially notified that the city received approval for a grant of $478,000 to go towards the reconstruction of South Broadway Street. It's a project we anticipate completing next year in 2019. In addition, I want to mention, we have two projects that will be out to bid this week. One is the Guilford Bridge replacement, and the other is the East Smith reconstruction project. We'll commence the bidding process this week, and we'll open bids on those in three weeks. Both of those, I should note, are also grant projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCulley, service director.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one mayoral appointment, Mike Ryan, to the records commission for a term expiring 12/31/18.
Move to approve the mayoral appointment.
Second.
Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the mayoral appointment?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Not to object to the issuance of a D-5 permit to F O E A R E 2224 Medina 696 West Lafayette Road and Deck.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Unfinished business. We have none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to speak on other issues or portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 3618, an ordinance of council of the city of Medina, Ohio certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated in funds to satisfy the obligation, and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for road salt, and this is a then and now, and the emergency clause is requested because we need to pay for the salt that we've already received.
That winter was over, but maybe not.
It's snowing.
It's snowing now?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow. Is any further discussion, will we?
Yes.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance?
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 36-18 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 3718, ordinance of the council of the city of Medina, Ohio certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated in funds to satisfy the obligation, and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause is requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another then and now. It's over at the court. The PO for the prior year was closed before we got the last bill for the prior year. Consequently, this one's being paid on this year's purchase order, but it's, the dates don't line up, so we need this authorization.
Okay. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of emergency clause.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 37-18 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 3818, ordinance of the council of the city of Medina, Ohio certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated for funds to satisfy the obligation, and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
This one also has requested the emergency clause. I move to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
I think this is the last one like this, so. Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is the final then and now for this meeting. This one is to pay the JED distribution to the township, and it's with the new year. We didn't have a PO for it, so we need the approval and the authorization, the emergency clauses, so that we can get them paid.
It's always good to get money, because we get the same amount of money that the township gets, so that's always good. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance?
Mr. Coin.
Mr. Colosar.
I just asked Mr. Durham if he could explain to the public what these then and nows are. I know we get pretty frequent, but just somebody in the audience or somebody watching at home.
Sure. The state law requires that a purchase order has to exist before a good or service is purchased by the city. If it isn't, there are a few exceptions for emergencies, and then this then and now is an exception. If something is purchased, we didn't have the purchase order, but we did have the funds appropriated, and then when we go to pay it, and that's the now part, the sum is available to pay it, and council authorizes it, then we can do it that way.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or comments? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 38-18 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 3918, ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of arrangement with the auditor of the state, Dave Yost, for the preparation of the annual audit for the city of Medina for the fiscal period ending December 31st, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Durham, once again.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our letter of arrangement with the auditor states' office. We've asked for up to $40,000. It should be less than that, but they are required to test 40% of our federal programs. Usually, that's one federal program, but if one federal program doesn't cover it, they'll have to test two, and it'll cost a little bit more, so that's why we've asked for $40,000 in case that eventuality comes up. We don't really have a lot of choice in this. The state requires us to be audited, and the state auditor either does it themselves and tells us what they're going to charge us, or they bid it out, but they would do that, and they chose not to, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of emergency clause.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Ordinance 4118, an ordinance authorizing the payment of $34,640 to Software Solutions Inc., SSI, for software maintenance of the finance and service department's accounting system.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the software that we use for our accounting. This is up a couple percent from the prior year.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 41-18 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 4218, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2018 Ford F-250 crew cab truck from Montrose Ford to be used by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is to replace a truck that was recently damaged in an accident back in February. We intend to use the insurance money to purchase this new vehicle, and then the remainder of it be funded with our department's carryforward as we bump up our replacement schedule for vehicles. The damaged vehicle will then be auctioned at the next public auction. We did purchase this through the community university and education program, and the reason the emergency clause is requested is in order to secure a 2018 chassis before the 2019 model production takes place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Ordinance 42-18 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 4318, ordinance authorizing expenditure of $5,000 to the Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority to support the Medina County housing network's continuum of care.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request for the city council to provide $5,000 as one of funders for the MMHA's assistance with homelessness, a continuum of care, and other housing crises like paying for utilities and helping with rental assistance. The county has increased their contribution to $5,000, or their contribution from $10,000 to $15,000, so they increased it by five. The Medina County Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board has agreed to also support these efforts because a number of the clients that MMHA helps with their continuum of care are also suffering from substance abuse and/or mental health issues. And I've also asked the cities of Brunswick and Wadsworth to likewise contribute as well, and they are being reviewed through their processes. I respectfully ask the council to approve this $5,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Mr. Lamb?
Well, certainly. I voted for this contribution because I think when we had the discussion, many of us have had conversations with people that have had difficulty finding housing for reasons that don't need to be explained. They have been, they lost their housing or had difficulty with paying rent. And as the mayor described it when we talked about this in committee, it's not just a heartfelt thing, but I believe that then and now, that it is a responsibility of us as a community and a government of that community, as well as a moral responsibility to do what we have within our power to do without taking away from our other obligations to best ensure that we don't have folks who don't have a place to live, or it is difficult to find a place to live, depending, because of the circumstances that they are stuck in. And I thought it was a good thing that we did, and that the mayor is approaching other communities to likewise contribute to this. And I was quite willing to make that vote, to make the contribution.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? I guess I just have one. I'll be voting against it, not because I don't agree with the donation. I also voted against the Office of Older Adults. I just think it's difficult for a city to make a determination of what nonprofits should or shouldn't get funding because a lot of them assist people in the city of Medina, but we can't fund all of them. It's difficult enough to fund our own city, but that's just my personal opinion is to, you know, difficult to give everybody money that requests, so I just, I want to be consistent. I just vote no on all of them, because I think that may be the appropriate thing to do. That's just my opinion.
I would further comment, though, that I understand exactly what you're saying, and I think recently we did have a request for some funding that we tried to work out without giving the funding, but I think it's important to look at the hierarchy of need. And the two things that we have agreed to fund were, had to be at the top of that hierarchy of just the human need, and one of those things was food, for the Office of Older Adults, and one of those things was housing. And as a human being, I think you have to think, what are the things you need the most? What is the most important thing? And it is that you have a place to shelter, and you have some food to eat.
Those are good things.
Thank you.
Those are good things. Any further discussion, Mr. President?
I too will be voting no for this ordinance. While I agree that they do some good things, and people do need food and shelter, the hierarchy of needs, there wasn't enough, how should I say, information there for us to quantify what residents are going to be, of the city of Medina, are going to be helped by this. And again, I am concerned about dispersing city funds, city tax dollars, to go to people outside the city, and that's why I will be voting. But like with the Office of Older Adults, I will be giving them a personal check.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
No.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaby.
Yes.
Rose.
No.
Shields.
Yes.
Excuse me. Ordinance 43-18 passes five VAs to names.
Ordinance 4418, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a revocable use permit with Peaceworks, Inc., an Ohio nonprofit corporation, to use or occupy 4,455 square feet of Boulevard Alley for the use as a gardening area plot.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. This land originally had a water tower until we constructed the much larger one on Progress Drive. There was no need to continue to have that water tower there, so we removed it. And otherwise would have had to maintain the lot, but it was used for at least a year, if not a couple years, by feeding Medina County, and then they quit using it for that, so then we were back to maintaining it. I was approached a month or so ago by Peaceworks, asking if they could use the land to reestablish the garden there. They also run the Spokes Cafe for us at 406 South Broadway at our trailhead, and do have a community garden there, and have the workers and the occupational needs with their clients to operate this garden, and I would ask for council's approval of same.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Coin. Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 44-18 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 45-18, ordinance amending ordinance number 17717 past December 11, 2017, amendments to the 2018 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a number of amendments here this meeting. First two, deal with the prospect waterline emergency replacement. Then there's a donation, and people at home may not understand, but when someone donates money to the city, we need council's authorization to be able to use that for the purpose it was donated for, so that's why that is in there. Then there's a group that are from the rec center, changes to their budget. Then we're building a new columbarium wall at the cemetery because the current wall has been filled up, so there's some appropriations for that. There's some grants, which is funds passed through here, but we have to have council's authorization to spend it. And finally, a couple of requests deal with a advance, which is a loan from one fund to another for the Guilford Road Bridge project.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Colosar?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Parnell, Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 45-18 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 46-18, ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned at the end of the last ordinance, the Guilford Bridge project. This is the authorization to make the advance that the appropriation was authorized for in the last ordinance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Liam?
Yes.
Parnell, Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Ordinance 46-18 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 47-18, ordinance amending section 54908 of the codified ordinance of the city of Medina, Ohio, relative to discharging firearms.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have an organization that will be coming this spring/summer season to put on a Civil War reenactment at the Spring Grove Cemetery. They will be using firearms that actually can discharge a musket ball, but they modify the weapon so that it only uses blanks. The ordinance we have with respect to firearms needs to be amended so as to allow this kind of activity, because currently, our ordinance does not allow the discharge of any firearm that could potentially fire a projectile. The ordinance before you modifies our ordinance so as to allow the mayor to review the activity and authorize it in writing. And in order for us to have this reenactment occur, we will need to amend this ordinance.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Parnell, Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Ordinance 47-18 passes seven zero.
And finally, ordinance 48-18, ordinance amending sections 3105 and 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the city of Medina, Ohio, relative to the reorganization of the Parks and Recreation Department and accepting various revised job descriptions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
And my second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is to reorganize the Parks Department due to a recent retirement of the superintendent. Over the last several years, many roles have changed in the department in order to help increase departmental efficiencies and improve services to the community, as well as work a little bit more collaboratively as a department. Requesting approval to amend a couple sections of the Salaries and Benefits Code, specifically 3105 and 3107, to combine the classifications of the Parks Superintendent and the Parks Director. Secondly, to recreate the Parks Foreman position at pay grade 37, and then upon, once there's a retirement from full-time labor classification, reclassifying that position to a Parks Maintenance Technician at pay grade 32, which will increase abilities in the department, as well as enable us to have two skilled individuals capable of performing maintenance tasks. Also, with the request is to make minor changes to various job descriptions, including the city arborist, the cemetery sexton, and the part-time turf technician. These changes will provide the department with better structure and improved services to the community at a cost savings. The reason for the emergency clause is because the position is vacant and our season is rapidly approaching, and with the filling of the Parks Foreman position, we need to do an internal posting and testing, so I'm requesting approval at the earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Parnell, Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.